Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to take a moment to thank everybody for coming out. This is always an important time of the year, election season, and more importantly, a local election season, as the individuals that you elect impact our lives and the votes day to day. So it's always important to turn out and get involved in the community. And then, more importantly, a local election season, as the individuals that you elect impact our lives. I'm Josh Sundberg, I'm the current Chair for the Holly Springs Chamber of Commerce. So officially welcome you guys. This is put on, we try and do it every time we have an election. The Government Relations Committee is the one that puts that on. So they put the effort behind making sure everything's set up properly and going. So I want to take a minute to recognize those folks. Moss Withers is the Chair of that Committee with NAIC Carolinian. Charles Archer with Freezing Nichols. Baxter Walker with Pauliers International. Greg Guy with Boppet Design &amp; Build. And Travis Kelly with Zaxby's. And I also want to thank Karen Shore, where she's somewhere, works for the Chamber, and she was running around last minute getting us everything we needed, so we appreciate your help as well. This evening we'll have Tim Conlon. Many of you know Tim, he's a staple in the community. He will serve as our moderator. He'll go through the details of how we'll go through the event tonight. We did solicit questions from the community, and basically the questions you'll hear tonight are from that survey we put out to the community, so trying to get the community involved as much as possible. So again, thank you for being here, and I'll turn it over to Tim.
Welcome, everyone, and thank you for your interest in the community. Thank you, each of the candidates, for your willingness to serve the needs of the people who live here. The way we will handle this tonight is, your names will be drawn in a random order each time a question is announced. I will also be drawing from here. By the way, so everyone will know, all the candidates were given 12 questions in advance of tonight's forum, so that they can be prepared. We will only be able to get to about four or five of the questions. Each candidate will be given two minutes to respond to the question. We're going to draw the questions at random, so I can't even tell you which of the 12 we're going to get to. And we'll be drawing the order that will begin answering each question each time, so I can't tell you what order you're going to be in. So everything's going to be pretty much the luck of the draw. We do this to try to make sure that the questions and the order of the questions being answered do not favor any particular candidate or any particular position. With that said, I do have an iPad here that has a little countdown clock. I will start it once you begin your response. When it gets to about one minute, I'll turn it around, so that you can see the countdown, and then it has a little bell that dings, and I'll ask you when it dings to stop answering that question. Okay, is everyone ready?
Yes, sir.
And prepared? Let's see what our first question is for the evening. Our first question is, the 11th question that was on your sheet, if you're there in front of us, and had it in front of you after reading. "There appears to be a shortage of affordable housing in Holly Springs, and there's currently no public transportation to and from our community. Do you view this as a problem? And if so, how would you address it as a member of the Town Council?" And by the way, I apologize, I failed to tell you, at the end of the questions this evening, each of you will have two minutes to make closing remarks. Okay? Does anyone need the question repeated? Okay. First candidate to respond will be Tom O'Brien. And thank you very much for everyone coming out. It's hard to talk like that. Thank you for coming out this evening. Currently today, the town does not have any affordable housing, and that's something that we're going to need to work on going forward. What I'd like to do is to work with our staff, to work with the builders, to come up with some type of plan to provide affordable housing for these folks. What I will do is make sure that it's not impacting the surrounding subdivisions, but we've got to look and work with the developers to make sure that we can provide affordable housing for these folks. We're at 31,000 residents today. We're going to continue to grow, and we're going to have a diverse group of residents in Holly Springs. Thank you. Thank you, Tom. The second candidate will be Tim Sath.
I didn't know if you were coming down the line or not. Thank you again for everybody being here, and I thank the Chamber for also being as thorough as they can to provide the questions to all of us beforehand, so that we're all prepared on the same basis. I'm on the Town Council, get to see a lot of things that are going on in town. Been here when we had affordable housing projects in town that we developed back about 15 years ago now. There is affordable housing in Holly Springs, but there can always be more. One of the problems that we face in Holly Springs is the fact that the price of the lots, and the size of the lots in Holly Springs to build houses, has become more and more dire for builders to get, come in and build. So anything we can do to help them come here and build some of those houses? Habitat for Humanity has purchased three lots in Holly Springs just at our last meeting, and we have waived the fees for them. The other thing that was in the question was transportation. Right now, we have no transportation in town. Part of the regional plan is to, they're looking at bus service. What I'd like to see us do is do a circulator bus that services the different areas of town to bring people economically to the shopping centers that we've developed around the town. And that's part of our original transportation plan, but that's something that I'd like to emphasize here.
Thank you. Again, we'll be jumping around, because this is a random order each time. T. Shore.
Thanks again. I want to just thank everybody for coming out this afternoon. Since we didn't have any opening remarks, we were taking this time, as you can see, everybody's taking this time, to thank everybody for coming out, letting the Chamber know. We appreciate this opportunity to be able to sit in front of you guys and let you know why we're running for Holly Springs Town Council. The question concerning affordable housing takes me back to this most recent Town Council meeting, where Habitat for Humanities came in and they presented. They presented, they're wanting to come in and get three lots and build three affordable housing, and go ahead and bring in some families to take advantage of that. I appreciate that, and I'm glad, and they may mention that they have tried this for a while and haven't been able to get any land to build the houses there. I'm very appreciative that they have now found that and are going to move forward with that. As far as transportation, I don't think we're there yet. As I see it today, we're not ready to bring in buses, our infrastructure, or our traffic, our road issues that we currently have are just not there yet. For the future, it would be a great thing to have. We would like for, you know, residents who may not be able to get to and fro to be able to jump on a bus and get from one side of Holly Springs to another, or from here to Fuquay Barren or Apex. I think that we can make that happen, but I don't think we're ready for that as we are today.
Sherri Lee.
Okay, good evening. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. So glad to see this many people, very excited. I'm going to start with the affordable housing part. Again, as others have said, we do have Habitat for Humanity come out, so that is a great start. We do have some affordable senior housing off of Avon Ferry Road that is a few years old now, but they do have a waiting list. One thing that I know we have mentioned to developers before is, how about when you're building your sections of your homes, having patio homes, having a small ranch style home? When I'm thinking affordable, for the people who really can't afford their own home, but also, we have a more senior demographic moving to town. Everybody wants to be with their families. So we have to think on that aspect, too. So, you know, to continue to encourage these developers to look, hey, we have a piece of land over here, let's think about that, you know, to put some affordable houses. You know, and affordable to me is not 250,000, it's not even 200,000. So I think that's something that we really need to continue to develop when we work with these developers. As far as transportation, Councilman Sath did mention the buses being local, taking us to different places around town, especially as we have our Holly Springs Town Center, our North Main Athletic Complex, as we, in the future, decide to build a walkable downtown. But also, I think that is wonderful, but I'd also like to add, I'd love to see an express bus to RTP, to Raleigh, to Garner, so people can have like a parking ride, go head out, and it would help to take some of the traffic off the road.
Thank you. Pete Utley.
Last but not least, yeah, affordable housing, as we mentioned earlier, there is a need for it, but it's going to have to be based on the developers, what they see, and more, the commute of the citizens in the town of Holly Springs. And as far as that, you know, we have to come up with an infrastructure, because if the developers has land, they have to have a need for the affordable housing. I mean, there is a need, but what I'm trying to say is the fact that we have to have a place, there's a place for everything. And right now, with Habitat coming in, that's a great idea, but the developers with the price of the land, I mean, the price of land is $70,000 for a building permit. And that's definitely like Sherri said earlier, affordable housing can have to range from at least $90,000 down, for $90,000. As far as transportation is concerned, a few years back, we had a Southwest area Transit Study Committee that consisted of Holly Springs, Fuquay, Hornet County. So there was, everything was in place, but what we need to get it back together, the community leaders, and have social events where not, not as a meet and greet, but as a come out for citizens' involvement, have their input. The committee would be based on citizens, 18 to 64 for the transit part of it, because there is a need for transit, for infrastructure, transportation department, and transit. That would help cut down on some of the...
Okay, the second question will be... Question number 10. Of those who responded to a recent Chamber survey, an overwhelming majority indicated that development and traffic were their top concerns. That being said, there appears to be two schools of thought on growth. One being approve growth and create infrastructure later, the other being create infrastructure and then approve growth. To which school of thought do you belong, and why? It's like the lottery, you know, play the picks. And the first to respond will be Tim Sath.
I think I could have lottery ticket. In answer to the question, the Holly Springs encompasses both schools of thought. Being on the board for the last eight years, and before that, four years, as a Commissioner, we've been looking at the long-range things, as far as building infrastructure. We built our water and sewer capacity, so that we would meet the needs of the people here up to the build-out time of 45,000 to 55,000 people. We've got water and sewer that'll do that. We build those infrastructures. We built the pipelines and the sewer plants, and they're in place, and you're paying for that out of your water and sewer bills. That said, the man for schools and transportation are a different school of thought. We wouldn't have those schools unless we had the people here as the residents to force Wake County School Board to build the schools here. We started with zero, now we have seven, we're building eight. But that infrastructure, we don't build in advance. We build it as the need occurs, takes time to get it on the books and get it financed. Same thing with transportation. We have forecasted what our needs are going to be in the future as far as the roads, and a lot of things impact that. One of the things that we are faced, though, is the traffic that we encompass on 55 bypass, 70% of that during the day is from out of town, coming through. But we have planned for the last six years, we've seen the problem, and we've put plans in place to rectify those problems. The problem is dealing with NC DOT is that we have to get environmental impact studies, we have to get funding for it, we have to get plans built, and then we have to get it contracted out. That takes time. We've been working on the Avon Ferry and the Main Street Extension now for six years. We're finally letting the contracts now for those projects, and hopefully they'll be started soon, this fall or next spring.
T. Shore.
Okay. The school of thought, the two schools of thought, the one that I most favor is neither. I guess my thought process is, why can't we keep ahead of the infrastructure while we're growing? For instance, as I commute to RTP daily, I go down the same NC 55 from here all the way to RTP, and I don't get to the major traffic issues until returning back. One of the big things that has happened in the last six years, or what I hear all the time, is that we've been working on Avon Ferry Road and the 55 bypass since 2006. When I think of projects, and when I think of things, when I'm at work, when I have a deadline, I have to get it done. For it to take that long means to me that maybe there wasn't a plan put in place to prepare us for the growth that we have. So, and for instance, the target, when it came out that Super Streets, Target required us to have a Super Street in order to, for Target to come here, I now take a look at, there's two Targets in between here and 55. There's no other Super Streets but here and Holly Springs. What are we going to do to get our families off the roads and back to the dinner table? What are we going to do to get our families off the roads, our mothers and our fathers off the roads, and back to helping our kids with their homework? Getting back on those fields to see them play the recreational activities that they would like to play? We have to do something. We've taken, we've been rewarded a million dollars, and going to put 600,000 towards a beer park at the North Main Athletic Complex. We have a deadline as to when that's going to take place, and that's by the next season. Why can't we do the same with our roads?
Pete Utley.
My concern was traffic. I think there is a need for commercial transit here now. With the study we did several years ago, when I sat on the Southwest Area Transit Study Committee, we combined with Hornet County, Fuquay, and all the way to Fayetteville. There is need, it's in place. We just have to put it, implement it, put the committee together, back together. We were teaming with Compo, and there is a need. Because we share traffic on the bypass, which is one of these cities and towns. And for development, development is always going to be a part of Holly Springs. If we're going to grow, you can't just stop growth. You're going to have to change your infrastructure, that'll come later. When you're trying to change infrastructure or alleviate the bypass, you got to meet back with DOT, it's going to cost money. You can't spend money all the time. You got to work around the problem that you had. Let's solve those problems first, and then we'll take more.
Tom O'Brien.
I have the honor and privilege to meet a lot of subdivisions about this topic, and it's a hot topic in town, traffic congestion, what comes first, what comes second. I've met with the folks in Braxton Village, Holly Glen, and at this point, they are so frustrated that if those sirens go off, they're not going to be able to get out. And we've got to help everybody in Holly Springs, but specifically the folks on Avon Ferry, Braxton Village, Holly Point. With traffic, as we all know, it's with growth, we have some growing pains. Infrastructure is important first. Last 10 to 20 years, Holly Springs was a small town. We're no longer a small town. We're building up our subdivisions, but now we have to play catch-up. I spoke to Sue Evans, who sits on the Wake Board several times, and basically they're telling me that they don't have any money to continue to build high schools that's needed here. They're about 20 years behind. But you have to understand, 10 to 20 years ago, you know, some of these lots were approved for residential, and they're here. The town can't do much on that. Here's what I would like to do. If the DOT has no money, and the town has no money, I'm prepared to go to Congress, just like the folks in Fuquay did last month, the mayor, Town Council there, and ask for help. We can no longer go back and forth saying, it's the DOT's problem, it's the town's problem, it's the builders' problem. Someone's got to step up, and I'm prepared to step up and make that call to Congress to help us out, because with traffic, it lowers property value. Thank you.
Bet you it's me. Okay. Well, I'm going to go back to the question of which needs to happen first, and I'm going to say they need to happen simultaneously. I live on Avon Ferry Road. I'm on there every day. I understand the frustration. One of the things that we, in the last 10 years, the DOT has granted us over, I believe over $13 million. So we're waiting, and I'm waiting, the town's waiting, to get our bypass in Avon Ferry Road done, we're waiting to get the Main Street Extension done. But the reason we're waiting is because it does take time. Land acquisition, just being on DOT's list takes time, but we do stay on it. I mean, I'd be happy to send you all the emails about that, and I know it is going to happen very soon. Now, that being said, one thing that I do want to be careful of, and I know we will, is as we're building places like down New Hill, we don't want that to become another Avon Ferry. Right now, developers, when they do come in and they build a subdivision, they are required to do a certain amount of road improvements around their area. And so we, as the town has done, will do, we're going to continue to build on that and try to make that, so that doesn't happen on that road. Now, as far as the money, as Ms. Oak said, the million dollars to go towards Salamanders, we're getting that done right away, that's a whole different entity. That's coming as a grant from someplace that doesn't have the problems the DOT does. But let me tell you, one thing that is happening, and this is something Fuquay's doing, too, is there is a new transportation bond out. It's not a bond like in the past where, you know, it's just our money. It's where we would pay for these, you know, improvements upfront, and then over a period of years, the DOT would pay us back. And that's an initiative that the town is going to take.
Thank you. Next question will be... Question number nine. 11109, here we go. "As an elected official, how will you engage the county and state elected officials to act as an advocate for Holly Springs issues?" T. Shore.
I bet Mr. Spack is glad. How would I engage the county and the state? I would create and keep an open line of communication. I would find a representative that I can get through to and be able to get to in a timely manner whenever we have major issues. I would reach out before the situation becomes beyond something that we can even control, like our road issues. I would provide present and concrete evidence of the issues that we have. Providing citizens' concerns, because they are the reason why we're all here. We want to be the voice for the citizens. I would make, take the suggestions from the citizens, the suggestions from groups, the people that we have employed here on our town board that are the experts. I would take their suggestions and recommendations and work with our county and state representatives together with our citizens, and see if we can't alleviate some of the problems.
Tom O'Brien.
I have a business plan, and this is one of the top priorities. Within the first 60 days, I will be introducing myself to schedule, actually, schedule meetings with our local officials, both county and state. It's important that we have that type of relationship going forward as we continue to grow. We're going to talk to them about how great Holly Springs is, and where our weakness is, and where we're strong. Again, it's important to build those relationships, and over the course of time, we will gather and be strong together. Without communication with our elected officials, nothing gets done, as you can see with the DOT and some of the funding that goes on. So a different set of eyes and ears, maybe to shake hands with our state and county officials, and again, to tell them how great Holly Springs is, and ask them, you know, when we need help, you need to help Holly Springs. We're growing. And without their help, and without that relationship, we're not going to be successful. So that is one of my top, within the next 30 to 60 days, once elected, is to reach out to our elected state and county officials.
Pete Utley.
What I would do with the state and county, I'd definitely go out and solicit myself for the town, and advocate for them, have a meet and greet, let citizens get involved. You got to have citizens involved, no matter who you're meeting with, because we are going to have issues when it goes to that level. So my thing would be to engage, definitely on a personal level, to get them to know who and what Holly Springs is about. And that being said, you know, just to say what you're going to do, you got to lead the horse before the partner. And that being said, you know, you just got to create, create a barrier to Holly Springs that we're not going to settle. We're going to be able to get whatever everybody else has, we want just as much and just as much respect. It makes people feel better. What about Holly Springs? We need somebody to advocate for us. That's all I have to say.
Sherri Lee.
Well, as far as engaging the county and state elected officials, email, text, call, or stop by their house, which I've done. Sorry, Senator Barringer, Representative Stam, but sometimes you have to. Hey, they say it, right? Just like we do, hey, anytime, stop by, call. Well, I did. I met Whitaker Clavie, our Wake County Commissioner, and Senator Barringer, Representative Stam, many times over these last four years. I also, I also every week look at the General Assembly page, see what was going on during open session. One of the things that I'd love to do with friends and citizens when they ask about it, is to send on, I'll email, hey, guys, this is coming up in the House, we need to take a look at this. A lot of decisions recently have been made that affect municipalities. And our town has advocated very, very strongly, and the council, for and against some of these things. And we don't always win, but you are being heard, we are speaking out, and we are, by telling people about these, by putting it on Facebook, by, you know, just picking up a phone and saying, hey, can you come with me up to the General Assembly? We need to talk. Can you email somebody? We need to get this done. Holly Springs is very respected, especially with our high numbers of job growth recently. You know, we are on the map, but we need to continue to be, especially with, you know, with Apex just getting their great award. We all know it's really us, and we want to, you know... So, and the thing is, we have to continue, we have to let the General Assembly know, hey, we're not stopping here. We need help with this, we need to do that. We need them to know that it's not just, it's not just the staff and the council... We need them to know that it's not just the staff and the council saying this. It's the people that want to do that. So, "Hey, on Mondays, anybody wants to go, well, when the session's open, come with me." I don't know.
Well, you're not first. Ready?
Yes.
One of the things that I want to bring up, we don't operate in a vacuum. I mean, the town council and the mayor and the town staff are continually meeting with people. We go to the Wake County Board of Commissioners meetings. We go to the Wake County School Board meetings. We meet with state representatives. It's not something that is being neglected by the town. We send out referendums or... Forgot. Anyway, sweet. We meet a consensus and get the town to back different things and oppose different things in the General Assembly. Because a lot of things are affecting our town. It's not that we're ignoring them. It's just, a lot of times, you just don't get the response that you think you should get on these things. Our town belongs to the National League of Municipalities. I've attended national conventions and talked to our state representatives there and the congressman and our senators in Washington about the different issues. One of the big things is transportation. It has been for the last 20 years. They have failed to pass a transportation bill, and they keep redoing what they have. They need to redo the whole transportation thing, and that's been on the League of Municipalities' primary list for the last 15 years that I know of. So it's not, you just don't think that we're not doing these things. We are meeting with people. We are meeting with people in the community. So it's not something that we're going to reinvent. It's something that goes on all of the time. And I hope you appreciate the time that we spend interacting with them for you. The results may not always be what we want, but at least we are getting the word out. Thank you.
Okay, the next question. Stir these up some more. This is eight. Question number 12.
We already did that.
Oh, we did 11. Okay. But it's a growth issue again, which kind of gives you some indication to the number of questions we can afford that. But part of addressing the continued growth of Holly Springs is the need to keep our community safe. Where does ensuring public safety and supporting our men and women in uniform fall on your list of priorities? Sherri Lee.
It's me. Well, this is definitely at the top of my list. Our public safety, police, fire, EMS that help us out. One of the big things they need to be successful are resources, which we are providing with our new law enforcement centers being one of them. Our 911 communications that we received, almost a $1 million grant to help cover that. But one of the most important things, I think, with our police and fires is to educate people before these crimes happen, to educate people on what to do, what not to do if there's a crime. You know, we hear about these break-ins in the summer and stuff in cars and houses. And what we can do to help be, not vigilantes, oh goodness, but to be proactive when we see something. When some people were like, "I don't want to call the police for this." Always call. They want, they'd rather you call and get out there. So that's one of those things. I also, educating, involving our citizens in public safety programs includes, not just adults, but the kids, teaching them, you know, what to do when you see a stranger, or teaching them what happens. Unfortunately, with code red drills. We are one of the only municipalities that has an SRO in every school. And so supporting them is very important, again, with those resources.
Thank you. Tom O'Brien.
Just like Sherri had mentioned before, that is my top priority, to make sure that the citizens of Holly Springs are safe and make sure that the police and fire have the necessary resources to protect themselves as well. This past summer, we had a very unfamiliar instance that happened in Holly Springs. There were several break-ins into houses in Sunset Ridge, Wood Creek, car break-ins as well. And that's something that was very unfamiliar in our territory, in our town, sorry. What I did was, since I saw this, and Facebook is a tool that people were using to communicate, "Hey, there's a suspicious vehicle. We need to confront that vehicle" or to actually follow it home. That, we can't have a Zimmerman case there again. So what I did was, I reached out to the chief of police. I said, "We've got a situation where we've got some concerned citizens about some of these break-ins. I'm asking you, if you can, come out, talk to the folks in Sunset Ridge, Holly Glen, Braxton Village, all the subdivisions." And he thought it was a good idea. It's a good idea that we continue to do that, not because of that specific instance, but going forward. We're 31,000. Crime is going to tick up a little bit. We've got to be able to educate our residents on what to look for and to pick up that phone to call when there's a question, there's an issue. And we're going to keep doing that going forward. Public safety is top concern in Holly Springs for me. Thank you.
Pete Upp. Public safety should be a concern for everyone and a top priority because everybody wants to live and be happy in their home. But that's not always true. So it's going to take the citizens, not as well as the enforcement, fire, EMS, like you said, but it's going to take the citizen to get involved, too. You just can't rely the police officer to do everything. There's 24 hours, but there's still going to have citizen involvement. It's going to be prioritize. You have to prioritize. If you see something that you don't like, call. I mean, it's prioritize. Civil law.
Thank you. T. Short.
Public safety is high on my list. Maybe because I'm a little bit biased. I have a police officer who lives with me. So that would be my husband. He actually was a police officer here for five years and would probably come back if y'all tug at him a little bit. I'm just kidding. He enjoys the job. He's working with the state right now. But I think that to all of the break-ins and everything that happened over the summer, and I thought, maybe we need to come up with something. We do have social media. Social media has been used, and it helps. But what about those who don't participate in social media? What about those people, I like to call them our seasoned citizens, who may not go to work, who may be at home, who may not be on social media and see what's going on? Why don't we come up with some kind of process that would allow them to know? Guess what? We just had a break-in on the other side of town. That process is one that I know that Wilson County does. And what happens is, whenever there's a high, there's a crime or something that comes in, they get a description of the person, of the vehicle, of what has taken place. With that information, they do a pre-recorded call, and it goes out to the citizens and lets them know to be on the alert, be on the lookout. Guess what could happen with that, guys? Our citizens could get on the phone immediately, make those phone calls as soon as that person, they see that person. And that would keep the criminals out of Holly Springs once they get a load of what we're doing here. Thank you.
Tim Sang.
Well, being from a law enforcement background, I was with DEA for 25 years and broadcast, which is all over the country. I know how important law enforcement and the public safety is. It's always been one of my high priorities. You have to look back at where we started in this town with one police officer, Cecil Parker, and a volunteer police department, or fire department, to where we are today with over 60 officers, with K-9 units, 911 center, and everything else. And the fire department, that's one of the most professional in the county. And you look at how far we've come and the support that the town has given them over the years for what they need. When they come to us with needs, they have a long list of things. We make those prioritize, prioritize the things that they need and get them what they need. And that's made us one of the safest towns by statistics in North Carolina. We continue to need improvement. We're doing the 28,000 square foot police center. That's going to be one of the state-of-the-art police offices in the county. We have our own 911 center that most towns don't have, that handles all of our calls here. The fire department, we just redid the fire department on Avon Ferry Road after the tornado took the roof off. And that's now has people on duty there full-time. And we have a third one out at the end of Friendship Road that's manned to cover the other end of town. So we keep supporting the police and fire. And as the town grows, so do the needs. But we keep supporting them and giving them what they need so that you can be proud of them and feel safe in your homes.
Thank you. The next question will be number five. If you could have only one project for Holly Springs to be fully funded and completed while you are in office, which one would it be? Pete Upp.
That one project would be for me, it's a no-brainer, be the Holly Springs Cemetery. There's a lot of heritage there. And there's something really dear to me. My mom's there. And I had a lot of people say, "What are you going to do about that cemetery? It's a reference to town. And it's not going to cost that much money to do it." I would be personally involved in that project. I'd get it done. I'd get it done. That's my project.
Thank you. Tom O'Brien.
We currently don't have a downtown in Holly Springs. I hate going to Apex and Cary. Fuqua's got a little head start with us right now. What I'd like to see, the fact that with the new police station that's being built, where the cars are allocated in that lot next door there, we won't need that lot anymore. We can move the vehicles, the other town vehicles, to the other lot. It'd give us a great opportunity to start building and bringing in small to mid-size businesses, like restaurants. And to have people be able to walk downtown, through downtown, that would be a project. It may not happen in my four years, but that's one of my goals, is to bring to the town. And hopefully, it starts in that first four years. I think that's important for businesses to thrive, to bring small, mid-size businesses to downtown or the residents and take full advantage of these types of opportunities. And I'm hoping that during the course of my four years, that we can come together to bring a downtown to Holly Springs. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherri Lee.
Okay, well, I'm just going to play off what Mr. O'Brien said, and I agree, a real downtown, a walkable downtown. We are starting to, some wheels are turning right now to get that done. One of the things is, you know, with Apex and Fuqua, they love their downtowns. They kind of were built around the railroad there. But that shouldn't stop us, and it won't stop us. I know it won't. We have some land acquisition to do. We have some changes to make. But I would love to see, you know, more little private, little small-business shops and restaurants. You know, we'll pick up with the Mims Park again, have a park down there. It's something that everybody will want to walk to. Downtown should be the heart of a town. And it should be vibrant and inviting. And I think that is something that we can definitely do. It will take time. It will take money. But one way that I want to do this is to have put together a citizen-led committee. And not just a committee that meets and talks about it, an active committee. I may be going beyond what I'm allowed with as far as what I would like to do, but I'd like to see, you know, give these people the power to go head out and, you know, come up with ideas, find the ideas, look at grant writing and see what we can do to make this happen. You know, of course, all the legal processes we have to do, or I should say, the town has to do, that's something I think it's very attainable. It's slowly starting to happen. We're going to see some things over the next couple of years. And if this does happen, and I can have the committee, I would love as many people as possible to be a part of that.
Thank you. T. Short, please.
I would, again, focus on our infrastructure, on our roads. I would go into the Braxton Villages. I would go into the Holly Glens on any... At the end, back of each one of those subdivisions, you will see a sign. That sign says, "Future Road Expansion." So there's got to be something back there. Can we not figure out what it is that's back there? Since we have, I would have the funds available. Make a road all the way through to the business park. So that will alleviate some of the traffic that would even have to go on interperiod. There are some adults, there are some parents who don't have to pick up kids from the high school, from the middle school, from the daycare there. And they would never have to actually go onto Avon Ferry Road if there was an additional option. That would take, give us back our safety. Then feeling a little bit more safe, as Mr. O'Brien mentioned earlier, if those sirens go off, we know we're done because we only basically, for the most part, have one way in and one way out. That was, a great example was our last Iron Man that came through. And there was somebody hurt, that got hurt. So they had to block the back way off going towards Sharon Harris. It was completely blocked. So all of the traffic had to go down Avon Ferry to 55. My husband and I, my daughter, we were supposed to be going to a wedding on that day. We were leaving an hour in Durham. The wedding was in Durham. So we knew we needed to leave at least an hour ahead of time. It took us an hour to maneuver from Avon Ferry Road to Ford. So we need an alternate route. We've got to have an alternate route.
Can I guess? Mr. Sat?
We only have one project that I have to do while I'm in office the next four years if I get re-elected. The downtown has been a priority as long as I've been here. While we tried to plan the, with Joe Hagan, drawing a downtown that everybody could have walkable businesses there. That was 15 or 18 years ago that we threw that up. But we have to get the businesses to invest in there. The Mosaic on Main is going in where the police station and fire station were on Holly Springs Road, not Holly Springs, Main Street. That's finally, it's taken several years, but that's finally got the financing for that. And we approved it, and it's going to be starting to build this fall. That's going to be one thing. But I want to see the Mims Park developed. That is the wooded area behind the Mims House and the Methodist Church there. Several years ago, we did a master plan. We had the citizens involved in a master plan to plan that park. And eventually moved it, Farmer's Market there, and very recreational exhibits there for people. The other thing that's going to be with that is what they call a BMP, Best Management Practice. It's a crazy name for that. But it's going to be like a water park right at Avon Ferry Road going into that park. Those two things are going to bring that and make that a destination for people. And it'll also bring customers for people to visit Mosaic and whatever restaurants go in there. So for me, it's the completion of the Mims Park and the building of that water feature there at Avon Ferry Road.
Thank you. Okay, it is 20 after 6:00. We're going to try to close this out by 6:30, so we're going to run just a little long. We're going to ask each of you to give a two-minute kind of closing statement or summary statement or passion statement. But you're going to have two minutes for a statement. And again, your names will be drawn at random. and again, your names will be drawn at random. Tim Sack.
I went in. I am Councilman Tim Sack, and I'm running for reelection to the town council. I'm running to continue the work that we as a council have put in place as a vision for Holly Springs, make it the best place to live in North Carolina. My wife Barbara and I moved to Holly Springs in October of 1994 from Seattle area when I retired as a DEA agent. We found the town had a long history, but current development conveniences for its citizens were lacking. There were no schools, no grocery stores, little recreation facilities, no businesses to meet the needs of the growing town. We have, we had citizen input for years on what nature of our town should be and where the residences, businesses, and industries should be located. We as a council have set in place the zoning for the town to continue to look at those plans and make adjustments as the town grows. The concerns that we face now are the same ones we faced 25 years ago, traffic and attracting commercial development. I have been part of the task forces on transportation for many years. We have developed plans to alleviate the congestion with the DOT, but everything takes so very long to get it done. We have been working on alleviating congestion on Avon Ferry Roads and Main Street for over six years, and the contracts are now being left. Commercial development in downtown Holly Springs is also needed. I continue to look for ways to make it economically possible for develops to build in downtown. We have our first major developed mosaic on Main Street going in. I am part of the town council that I am proud of. The mayor and the five council members are all from different backgrounds and different age groups. We all have one thing in common, we all want what is best for Holly Springs. I'm asking for your vote on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherry Lee.
My name's Sherry Lee, I am, I've been on the town council for four years now, and I am hoping to be re-elected on November 3rd. Everybody, please come out and vote, drag your neighbors too. You know, we live in a very desirable place, pretty good economy, everybody wants to move here. Houses are selling, Realtor friends tell me they're selling before they even hit the market. And of course, with this growth comes some concern. One of the things, you know, we, one of the things that brings people there are amenities, North Main Athletic Complex with our Salamanders baseball team, places like right here, the cultural center. I mean, I am on the same stage that Paula Cole, Pat Boone, Beyond, John Oates, together on center stage, with some of our wonderful kids from this area that perform. But also, one of the things is, is being able to work with a great town and great citizens to help make sure that we can effectively work within the processes that are in place, to make sure that we continue to be a safe road, offer safe facilities, continue to look ahead as far as our infrastructure goes, and to move in a way that, when we do have that incredible downtown, that people will want to come and visit. So, one of the most important things to me though is that I just want to let people know that I'm doing the job I was elected to do. I'm being a voice for our citizens, I'm extremely active on social media, I don't think I'm missing a page yet, and I just want, I'd like to think that my leadership on the council has contributed to a lot of what, the positive things that are happening in Holly Springs. So, again, please consider me for your vote on November 3rd, but most important, please, please vote.
Thank you. Tom O'Brien.
For the last 45 days, I've had the honor and privilege to meet a lot of people in each subdivision, and a lot of them think that possibly I could have been the former coach of NC State football. I still get that, and I keep telling them that I would have kept Mr. Wilson as a quarterback, but unfortunately, he chose to go a different route. Just a little bit about me, I think you need to know about my integrity, my character, my passion for the town. For the, been married for 21 years to my wife, my kids go to Holly Springs High School as well as the middle school. I have been active in town for the last 10 years. I've served with the, volunteered my time with Parks and Rec for football, basketball, baseball, I've coached, I've served as a president of our youth football program. I've been on the Subs Farm Committee, a committee that was comprised of citizens that brought different ideas to possibly look at the landscape of what we can develop at Subs Farm. I serve on the, on the board for the Meg Smile Foundation, which is based here in Holly Springs. We provide a special day for kids that are going through a trying time, and we work with the folks at UNC Hospital, Children's Hospital, as well as Duke Hospital. What I'm asking for is to look at my integrity, my character, and my hard work. I think I'm the only one knocking on doors the last 45 days to reach out to the citizens and get their feedback. We're not here to drive the car, we're here to work and build the car, build the car together to make Holly Springs the greatest town in America. And I am asking for your vote, Tom O'Brien, on November 3rd. My website is tomobrienforforobrien.com. Thank you very much for coming out this evening.
Thank you. Pete Upton.
Hi, I'm Pete Upton, I want your vote for Town of Holly Springs Council. I'm born and raised here, I've seen this town when it was dirt road. I've watched it grow, I've been a part of the growth, I've been on the playing board for several years now, I've been on several committees, but I'm not, Tom O'Brien's not the only one that's been knocking on doors. This is my third do-around, and my heart and my passion are word on my face. I, I just want diversity with surrender. I don't want any trouble, I just want to have a council that, for every walk of life, everybody, everybody needs a voice, and I'm going to be that voice. Vote for Pete Upton, I'm that voice.
Thank you. Tishor Oates.
First, I would like to appreciate, say thanks, and then show appreciation for everybody who has, again, came out, taken the time as per busy schedules, to come and listen to what we have to say to get your votes. By no means, by no means, I think it has been said that I'm not for growth. I am, let's make that clear. I am for growth in Holly Springs, we need that. We are good, Holly Springs does a lot of good things, but how do we move to great? Isn't that where we want to be? We want to be great, not just good. So, I am for growth. I, like every one of us in here, love Holly Springs. I wouldn't love it if I hadn't, if, if being here 12 years shows that I love the town in which I live. I'm a part of an organization, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sororities Incorporated, it'll be 20 years this week. Our motto is, "To be supreme in service to all mankind." That's my goal, that's the reason why I've taken the time away from my family, away from my four-year-old, the prettiest little girl in the whole wide world. That's why I walk away from her and come to sit in front of you and tell you, "I want to be, I want your vote on November 3rd," because I have a passion for the town in which I live. I want to see us prosper, I want to see the North Main Athletic Complex be successful. I would love to bring in, and a lot of you, we don't have the representation on our town council board, of that group of citizens from the ages of low 30s to the age of 41 that makes up the place to raise a small family. So, you probably wouldn't know anything about Yogatha Gabba or Doc Miss Stuffins. I would love to bring them, if you understand, people at my age with small families, we'll do whatever we have to do for our kids. I would love to bring them in for the kids. What's good for the kids of Holly Springs is those type of events. Thank you.
First of all, let's all give our candidates a hand.